The City Property Committee returns the following resolution. A resolution providing the site control of the Ptolemy School Committee for the construction of the new Unified High School in the City of Petucket. I move our confirmation on the role call up.
And moved by Councilor Kobyak, by Councilor O'Leary, that approval be given to a resolution providing the site control of the Ptolemy School for the construction of the new Unified High School in the City of Petucket. Any discussion on the matter outside of the left? Chair Kobyak, do you have anything on this?
Uh, I do. Um, actually, I'm still here. Actually, I have one, um, I didn't know, I had an outstanding question from the committee. Okay. Well, I guess it's, you know, during public, uh, public input, I always listen and try to write down anything that I want to get a clarification on or sparks a question that I have. Um, two questions that I have. If something was to happen during Stage Two or Stage Three, um, what happens to the property afterwards?
Actually, I can probably answer that. So, the school committee cannot, I will, cannot own any property. And so, we own all of the property that the current school is sitting on. Uh, if for some reason, the entirety of the project, whoever disappeared, the whole of that property would return to the city. Councilor, do you disagree with that?
That's the correct statement, surprise.
My other question is, um, I mean, this is a current issue that we're dealing with now, but it has been brought up that there might be some transportation insecurities moving forward. And I, my constituents do live on, on the part of the city that is at the Lincoln or Providence Center. Right? So, we're at the, the very end here. Um, are there plans for their due diligence? And if not, is it coming up in Stage Two or Three to work on those transportation insecurities? Um, working with first student or bus passes or anything like that?
Superintendent, if you could please just come up and show where portable to the phone line.
Good evening. There's been some preliminary conversations about approaching the school committee to change our boundaries and to change our blessing parameters. Uh, and we would always look at what the blessing, we do it all the time. So, we would work with our first student company to best route our students and ensure that we have the optimal depot stops for our students so we can get them to where they need to be.
Okay, thank you. Um...
Superintendent, anything? Do you mind, just in case we need to be close, remind me to say that I don't want to have another red.
I think my, my last question before I give my comments is, um, I, uh, in the briefs, obviously, I think everybody read that, um, I can never pronounce his name, but the millionaire, you know, said, said he doesn't want to move forward unless it has to the school. So, conversations are still continuing on the left end, but he's also with us, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay. I think those are my outstanding questions. Um, oh.
Just one second. While we have Superintendent, okay, this is Superintendent, okay. Can we, I'm going to correct myself. Um, secondly, hold, is that a government, just a little, anyone for a governor or not? You definitely have your question. Uh, are there any other questions that somebody, too, that they have for the friends?
Uh, just a comment. I think it's, uh, if I read it correctly, in, uh, Stage Two, it's like 1.75 miles away. It must be for the high school side, right?
Correct, 1.75.
Okay, so it would be meaningful, depending on, um, um, maybe, right? And you guys, um, like you said, Councilor Kobyak, you'd be looking at that.
Absolutely.
And am I correct in saying that that area of the city, the Jennings and Boyders, is basically kind of a geographic center of the city, correct?
It is geographically centered. It's a, it's a, it's a good spot for all the, well, actually, our offices are more geographically centered, right? But for a school building, that is then in the center. And it does, it's equidistant from a lot of the, the different sides of the city. The furthest would be, you know, the, the green area versus the furthest area. And so, they're equidistant to Jex.
Oh, I see.
I know, I just made two elementary schools, but I'm talking about neighborhoods.
I'm sorry, Maryland and Byd Press.
What's that?
Maryland and, Maryland and Byd Press.
Thank you.
Um, I, I do have one more question. Um, the, I think last, on our backfiring meeting, um, the architect or colleagues had said, you guys have done the due diligence for viability already, correct? That's part of the application.
It is.
Because a lot of people always, you know, love the swamp. I don't know, that's how things run out every public input, but that's already been...
They've done boring tests, and that would be something that Jonathan and Holly can speak to more diligently if you'd like, but they've done boring tests and they've done feasibility studies. Just wanted to confirm.
One second, Councilor. Yes, uh, I have a couple of sites. The other thing with the annex, uh, going annex is, in terms of traffic congestion, there is, I believe, three schools nearby that have Jex Elementary School and the same brains. Um, what's going to be the impact in terms of congestion?
Well, they did the traffic study, and they thought that with the right routing and the right structures, uh, the traffic would not be too bad on, on the vision. Jonathan, do you want to speak to that? They did the traffic study, a pretty in-depth traffic study.
Yes.
So, uh, the vitamins that you have contain, as I mentioned in the last, uh, an in-depth traffic study. Uh, it's quite extensive. And as I mentioned, the last time, the study is not only the Stage Two. Just those four vitamins that you have.
Two thousand nine hundred and something pages.
You didn't approve?
So, there's, there's, there's a new one, it's been asked once. So, yes, there is a fixed traffic study, traffic study was conducted at the time, and it was full school activity in the neighborhood. So, we understood the interactivity of the elementary, the middle school, uh, the school for the Brooklyn Heights, and potential new high schools. So, I'm not going to review all the details, but I'll give you a summary. Um, the traffic in here is very confident that we can handle the additional traffic on that site.
Right.
I'll just give you one detail that'll just give you some insight. So, as part of our design, many of the students will be coming by bus. There's over 1,000 linear feet of queuing space on the site of the school, not on the adjacent city streets, but on the site of the school, to relieve congestion from the adjacent streets. So, there's, there's all that queuing lane. Most of the traffic is going to be buses on the site to avoid the congestion that might occur if those buses pass. That's just giving you one detail of the design that went into the report. So, yes, we're very confident that traffic will work, even though there are two other schools there. Actually, three, yeah, three other schools. Is that it?
Uh, it does. I have a question to ask the next one. Uh, I just was wondering if there's been any alternative design plans under the cooperate McCoy, or even in the intact, and the book, because part of the Unified High School, uh, maybe let these schools feel sort of optimal.
Um, last time we were together, Mr. Levy had given you a one-page document. I think the organization of McCoy was deliberated at one point. Uh, but it showed that the design of the project and the McCoy set don't fit on the site.
I saw it in common, uh, commonly.
As correct.
Yeah, well, this is, but I asked if this is an alternative design that can be looked at instead of that.
You can certainly be the architect.
So, the question, so that, that is a question that really only can be answered accurately by actually doing a design study to place the, a 2,100-student school on the same site as McCoy. That has not been done. The illustration that I passed up last, which by the way, President Person was correct. I think what was, what was...
It was the old, it was in the wrong spot.
It wasn't in the wrong spot. It was in a different spot than the parasofield actually is. But it wasn't the intent to show parasofield. We had just taken all the elements, and that's what was confusing. We're, we're all right, that's the thing. Um, so that was meant to demonstrate the density of the different components of a high school and how they would relate to existing McCoy Stadium field. In, in order to give you a sense of how difficult it would be. But in our conversations with the developer and with the district, I think what came out clearly, and I hope I'm not throwing out too much of a, of a limb here, not so much the physical, uh, sighting of those, of those elements within McCoy Stadium, it's the reality that the operations of a high school and a professional sports venue are not compatible. Those two things don't go together. You think about the daily practices, the community events that would be occurring, and the schedule of a professional team. Um, and also, the developer is a little naive, was a little naive. Very good nature, uh, very polite good will there, but a little naive in the idea that we share a field between baseball and football in a correct orientation. And by the way, it's not a football, the parasofield is not a football field. It's a track football field, meaning that there's an athletic track that was grounded. So, those two things don't go together. You can't, you can't superimpose those two things. So, there is just a lot of impairments that were coming before you wanted to do a design study to figure out if you could somehow pack that together. So, I haven't done that, the actual professional work. We haven't performed the study, but I think it only makes common sense that you can see that just operation can do huge challenges. And I think the main thing that the district brought up to this conversation was your concern about safety and security. Because you have up to 11,000 fans, and you're imagining that the school operations are not just restricted to certain hours, but they are actual activities, there are community activities, there are practices. And I think my accurate in saying that there's great concerns about the security and safety of students on, on that shared site. So, that just gives you a flavor for some of the things that would even be coming before somebody else can say, "We will study." Well, I want it was to use as a professional sports stadium in one, uh, not for schools, or many schools kind of on championship ends and that sort of thing. And you could also use it for concerts and, and some activities. But I can't comment on that because I don't know what those activities would be. I can tell you that a baseball stadium is not a football stadium. So, um, yes, it would work as a baseball stadium, but not as a football stadium, not as a track football stadium, just because of the configuration of what we mentioned.
I'll send you anything. I'm pretty sure you have the question.
Well, it actually, it actually has a little bit to do with what Councilor Burger is asking. In your, in this drawing, right, you have the baseball field that's going to potentially be there. Is it not possible, I mean, obviously, not having a professional team, I understand that. Is it possible just to take pieces of McCoy's, of Hetero whatever, and make this sort of a mini-high school McCoy?
So, that's a wonderful idea. And funny, when we were just talking about that in the hall, we were talking about what, what parts of McCoy Stadium could we reuse or reframe? And I think there are parts. Uh, for example, when McCoy was enlarged some years ago, uh, they used prefabricated bleacher elements that I think may be, we may, yes, very well be able to use those as parts in the new stadium. But just keep in mind that a track football field is totally different, you know, from a baseball field.
No, I'm just talking about this part right here, the baseball field.
Well, we threw it separately because we were asked to think about a professional baseball team combining activities with a high school. And a high school is going to have its own baseball team. So, how can they be practicing on the same field at the same time or so? So, you would choose it.
Yeah, so it's possible that at the end of day, you could, uh, preserve some of the building elements of McCoy into a new baseball for kid, for the high school kids.
Absolutely. And I hope that'll be a goal in the project is to have identifiable pieces of McCoy Stadium that will be able to remember in McCoy Stadium and be part of the school.
Anybody else? The questions? Well, Councilor. Councilor's questions?
The resolution?
Where are we? So, we're on the resolution, so are you having questions for members of the school department or just comments on the, uh, the, uh...
I have a question. I have a question. Is there any other question?
Go real quick.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Certainly, I personally thank Councilor Kobyak, Chairman Kobyak, who knows the hard work with the property share, having that prime meeting, and those very, very information that helped us out, and also having your fellow opinion this evening. So, thank you for that. I'm certainly going to be supporting the resolution. Um, so again, I'm studying, looking at it in the last few days. What comes down to me, I have two words that come to mind, comfort and confidence. I'm very comfortable with the resolution. I mean, that's key for me. I did a lot of studying on it. I'm very comfortable with the way it's presented, and that all the eyes have been dotted and the tethers have been crossed. I want to thank the school committee and the school department for showing up to the meeting and putting me at two cents worth in as well. I'm also confident, confident that certainly, the proposed resolution will go through with the, the past this evening, and that all I've worked at, it's been building on, the architect and everything else is going to come to fruition with a, probably the Unified High School going to the state of Athens at that point, kind of, is completed in five years or so. So, I'm very excited about the project. Again, very comfortable, very confident, with everything that's happened so far, and I will be supporting the resolution. So, thank you.
Okay, without the resolution, Councilor O'Leary?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for, uh, Councilor O'Leary said, "Thank everybody about, this is the biggest project of the city's that I put forth. It's going to benefit the children, the future of our city. Having CTE program is vital, um, as, you know, there's a lot of need for those programs. We saw it being a successful supply for money and standards, and it's going to be very successful here. Um, and I know that a lot of hard work went into it, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts. I think it's, uh, our children deserve a new school. Ninety, 91% reimbursement on this project. It's up to $330 million, but we get up to 91% reimbursement monthly. I don't have the exact numbers, but it's in that ballpark. Um, so, this is, um, I think it's a need for the city, I think it's a need for the children, and I will be supporting the resolution.
Anyways, I have to go.
Um, I, I will also be supporting this resolution. Um, I, I love McCoy. I mean, I remember the players coming to elementary school and teaching us how to play ball. I love all those memories. Um, but I also have young boys in our school system, and I want them to have the best of the best, the best environment, the most high-tech stuff, the most state-of-the-art things. Um, I don't want them just to have something that's up to snuff. I want them to have the best, and they deserve the best. Um, I actually, um, was on the game, I was on TikTok, and I, I was looking at TikToks of brand-new schools, which, because this is something happening all over the country, is, you know, infrastructure and brand-new schools happening. And the students, and what they were saying on these TikToks from teachers, whatever, about, um, the school and how great they love it, and wanting to show like, hey, this is where I come to do automotive, this is where I come, um, for my stems, the excitement of these students who had prior, not up to snuff, schools, and how excited they are about having the best of the best, and how that made them feel. Um, I am looking forward to, um, making this investment for our, our students and for generations to come.
I just think, I'm sorry, I have a little, just want to make it clear. It's an 81% reimbursement, but we can get up to 91%, correct? We can certain goals, okay? I didn't want to throw the wrong numbers out there. Uh, I know we can attain those. I know we've said that we can attain it, we get the net extra 99.5%, and that's what we're hoping for, for our taxpayers, okay? Um, so, it is 81% guaranteed, but up to 91% roughly, ballpark, correct? Just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
I, I know I'm worrying on this topic, but that's how important this is. Um, you know, we're giving our faith to the, the school committee and the, the school building committee and the school department. I, I would like to move forward with having them come in every so often to give us updates. I know, um, probably finance is going to have, you know, a lot of our own updates when it comes to funding and everything, but I would like, I think, for people who want into our meetings, for ourselves, to have updates, um, as the statements continue.
Anybody else? Councilor.
Well, I don't want to leave it at a point too much in reference to the fact that the, the site is going to be the process to use a McCoy Stadium annex, which is a protected site. Again, I don't believe the process is going to follow correctly. Uh, there is no, and this resolution makes zero mention regarding the fact that McCoy Annex is a WCA study and is to be replaced. Oh, you mentioned the conversion project, and the single thing about it is just the whole store for McCoy Annex, it's nothing. So, I have issues there as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else before I weigh in? So, you know, we've heard over the last couple of meetings, a whole host of reasons why we shouldn't be doing this, why we shouldn't go toward Unified High School, and again, a zillion of it. There's, there's a lot of realities that, uh, the school committee's proposal for rehabbing Toman and Shea was shot down by Ryan. Half the board they, they had put together was not approved by Ryan. So, we were in a different, uh, on a different pathway and... I get in on the, since the ground floor, when we were the first kid in the tires, whether many of the tires were even made sense. I don't mind the wear, I don't mind all the other things. And I grew up, one month, I was up $300 from that time, though I think it was awful. I played all my games, and my first job was, was selling popcorn, peanuts, and cereal. I can still speak on that, I can't wait on here to sit anymore. I, I spent my entire childhood there, and I didn't want to speak here. The more we looked at it, I was also opposed to the idea of being a high school. And it was McCoy had put up two volleyball teams, two teams that would play, two quarterbacks, you name it. And I played both baseball and basketball at home, and it was an important part of why I was born. And things have changed now, and, and I played baseball at home. Thirty or forty or fifty kids came out for 12 lottery spots and 12 people. And 12 total kids can probably total, uh, total baseball, too. So, it's almost like we're, we're putting together to have 19 to the one state championships already because the interest is dwindling, where we can get those people to combine those two and then sign, uh, same thing with Trump, you know? So, where I was originally over here, that two to the plan is better than one to the plan. You know, I think we can, we can make it work, and I think it will be a game changer. It will keep, the longer the CTE, it will keep more students engaged and interested in coming to the Ptolemy High School, whatever it is we all want to gain. Second thing is, I walked through, while we were kicking the tires, and I toured each model of the high school. It's astounding. I went to Toman, went three years' school there, and it is like the Jets in this country compared to, uh, Ptolemy High School and Shea. And they thought very, I made it very clear all throughout this process that I want to make sure that we think of everything, that there are more two things that is found in cities, and if we can turn with them, we might get those one or two things right as well. Ultimately, we're talking about this type of resolution, because General Assembly has vested, complete care and control of school buildings in school facilities and municipalities. It's not, it's not city council. So, we, we have no choice if we are going to move forward with this project. We have no choice but to turn it over to them so they can prove to Ryan that this project has the blessing of the city. They have control to do what they need to do after everything is approved by Ryan, and potentially up to 91%, up to 270, $275 million reimbursement. I don't think we can do it. Much as sad as the one aspect, I don't think that we can do it. We are putting our faith in the elected school committee. We've gotten assurances from the chair, from the facilities, subcommittee chair, from the administration, and from their legal counsel that they understand the absolute need for collaboration and cooperation on this. We can't have a repeat of what happened with Winters. We need to make sure that collectively, as the city is 70, 75,000 residents, that we make sure this is done right. Students and their parents deserve it to be done right, and it will be decades and decades and generations and generations of students. So, uh, committee member most know, you know, just take that, that we are very much interested in complete collaboration, understanding well that I always think says, "You drive us." Um, we just want to make sure everything is taken care of. So, I will be supporting...
We fill it with gas, yeah.
I will, I will be supporting the resolution. Um, so, with that, court of the whole...
President Person?
Yes.
Councilor Ruj?
Yes.
Councilor Leir?
Yes.
Councilor Gregor?
No, for reasons I stated.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Councilor Rubio?
Yes.
Councilor Kobyak?
Yes.
Councilor Bulleye?
Yes.
Eight to one.
Number thirteen is a Northern District Amendment of Chapter 3266 of the Audiences of the City of Petucket, approving modification number one to amendment number eight.
Just one second, please. I apologize. I, I intended to make a, a motion, or ask for a motion made on, on, um, two, two, West Number One. So, Councilor, you said that you would make that motion. I apologize.
Sorry, I forgot, um, I said everything else. Um, I'd like to make a motion for our law department to, um, ask for a clarification about the school committee.
Yeah, so, really, I have the authority in, uh, school board.
Yes, uh-huh. And I'd like for our law department into looking into, um, um, needs and bounds, um, at some point, to clarify. some meat and bounds um at some point to collaborate with the school department.
Yeah. On the property.
Correct.
That's one motion, both requests are the law department expected by Councilor of Marano. Any discussion on those, we haven't yet had a discussion, I think, maybe so. Any discussion, on favor?
Sorry about that.
Again, I apologize, now, now, just a minute.
Uh, number thirteen is an ordinance.
Thank you.
Number thirteen is an ordinance in amendment of chapter thirty-two sixty-six of the ordinance of the city of Petucket approving modification number one to amendment number eighteen of the Petucket Development Plan related to the tide war landing project, motion to approve and roll call, vote for second passage.
Then ruled by Councilor Marano, second by Councilor Rubio, that second passage gave approval for amendment of chapter three thirty-two sixty-six, the ordinance of the city of Petucket approving modification number one to amendment number eighteen for Petucket Development Plan related to the tide war landing, again, it's for second passage. Any discussion, Councilor?
Uh, so, uh, so prior to a second ask, I just wanted to ask a quick uh question of my, um, appreciated, yes. Ancient few, um, four weeks of, oh, um, how it was explained to us at the um, if on the, of the um, of the um, product art of the agents of, um, who the city's, um, presidents and I owe that, um, the answer that uh previous councils have, we've seen over the um, previous uh years on, on, prior to, and I was only council, um, I don't, of the C I E. I mean, I think neither the acts incremental, um, um, right? And just me afterward, the Congress corporations. If, were any of them, well, so I was just, well, I'm wondering if we could use um written clarification occasion that and say um further, ooh, I love, um, action, um, action. There's a wrong, thank you, guys. So you're, you're looking for grants and written assurance from our Councilor?
Yeah. Okay, so actually, I, I think that it's kind of not a two-time to make this ask for it. So, you know, I've asked Councilor, the name Councilor Marano has asked them years now about the TIF bonds and we have been sure and sure and sure that they are not going to obligation bonds, they're not going to open them before by, by the tax. And over the years, I've, I've run this through my head. If you recall when Central Falls entered Bammersfield, their bond rating was very bad getting into Bammersfield. I mean, it was a jump on stats. And that's paying with a very high rate of return on the bonds because the investors are taking orders. And when they, when it's fair, the powers that be, the state level made the decision that those bonds do not be formed. And served by, it's guaranteed with the deal, but they also didn't act at high, at that high interest. So folks who bought, they were taking a chance for a, a, a big game or don't take a chance in the game. Some of you were guaranteed the big game with ultimately no risk. So I would just be concerned, I'm going to your point, I would be concerned that you know, TIF financing is something, right? And if it doesn't materialize, I want to use absolutely positive information. Only yet, Councilor Operation, only the government's office or somewhere else is going to say, we cannot let these go and then try to shift that burden of the taxes because we just do not get it. So uh, I, I think it's, it's a good idea, Councilor. So uh, you've made a motion to ask the bond Council to give us written clarification on the obligations of TIF financing bonds. And it's actually out of the vote, well, I understand it, the TIF bonds hit the street last week. So they are out of there, but they're very, very, but they are, so. Second by Councilor, second by Councilor Marano, we send a.
Council?
Council. All right, just my clarification, the plumb, the preliminary offer memorandum has gone out. I think we will not close on the bonds for several more weeks because of the public domain requirements.
Gotcha, they out of the public domain.
The information isn't, if you'd like, I can also forward the link to the clerk distributed to you guys so you can see the by-line on.
Sure, okay. And I, and I don't think that uh bond Council will have any problem giving us that assurance, but at least we then have something in the record instead of thirteen verbal assurance that we had. A, a written assurance as backed up by, you know, the Council mentioned, he couldn't find it in, in fact, he couldn't find an act, you know, it's taken a new regulation. So um, any question on sending that question to bond Council? Actually, on favor, Senator Tuvitish?
Aye.
Motion carried, but never. All right, thank you. We're on second passage, right?
Correct.
Anybody else on this second passage, that is for the whole?
President person?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Council of I?
Yes.
Council of Warden?
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Science.
So I can't, you can do, you can, so I didn't do it.
I'm going to assign it to my.
Thank you, Mr. Marano, Councilor. Um, the Finance Committee returns the following ordinance with the recommendation for approval. An ordinance for daily replacement schedule with pay rates for local two fifty-one, section eighty-eight dash twelve, code of residence is the city of Petucket, nineteen ninety-six, teamsters, I call for approval on the first passage.
So moved by Councilor, uh, Warden, second by Councilor Rubio, and ordinance for daily replacement schedule with pay rates for local two fifty-one, section eighty-eight dash twelve, code of residence is the city of Petucket, nineteen ninety-six, God and teamsters, for first passage on a rule called, any discussion? Court of the whole.
President person?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Council of Warden?
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask that you turn memory with two folks. Um, uh, first was Murdo Al Oudro, who was the city's director of emergency management from nineteen ninety-four through two thousand and seven. And also a long time business owner of the city, only a club president, uh, with my rosebud at a place a week ago. Um, and I was just maybe aware last night that uh, second time to the word, John Baker, his mom had been ill and passed away uh, last night, like we learned like before. Um, we're very close with her, she was a, you know, a lim, limiter at heart. Uh, John has been keeping the people of Petucket uh in the know for a number of years for his sports writers and um recently has here at Petucket, the news reporter. Uh, he's married to a high school classmate of mine and live in my district. Um, he's a very nice guy, is, uh, he's always wanted to, uh, so I'd just like to send out to those the vote to the Rudo family and the Baker family that has to be adjourned and all the rest.
Oh, we see him, we see him. Oh, yeah, I gotta go see him.
You gotta, you gotta interview the superintendent.
I will, I absolutely will. I mean, this, this is live right now, so I'm gonna, uh. Mr. Council President, can I get you for just a minute?
I'm Camerofkin.
Um, I don't want you to.
If you have a question, maybe that's fine, I'm not going to block you.
Okay, so I just, I'm, I'm live. So I just wanted to, first of all, congratulate the city, this is a moment with the school commi, with the school building, high school construction. Uh, long way to go.
Absolutely.
A long way to go, but this is a moment where City, the City of Petucket, a lot will feel it's sort of, sort of taking a great turn towards education. What, what's your impression, if you will, of the team that's put everything together so far, particularly on the design element? After having spent probably the last week and a half reading two thousand pages.
I, I spent the last two years or so, you know, getting to know the folks from Colliers and, you know, the first started out, like I said, I was kind of opposed to the whole idea, um, but not opposed to the bonding. You know, going back to two thousand and fourteen, right around there, we were pushing for bonding for water burns, bonding for Nat Green, the rebuild of Winters. So this is, this is another step forward in our educational buildings and system, to be perfectly honest, was left untouched for decades.
Right.
The last school we had built, all winters, was nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, I think it opened, uh, the Jets, you know? So we, we are absolutely committed to eliminating the, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm usually pretty good with words, too, but.
Well, I, as someone who's, someone who doesn't, didn't send their kids to Petucket schools, I've always admired, because I've been to Toman, I've been to Shay, how the incredible work that your staff there did, holding together these buildings, literally some days by sheer force of will. I, you know, I, I mean, just remarkably clean, again, difficult circumstances. It's a challenge running an, an urban center in New England in the year twenty twenty-three. So it, it strikes me that this is an incredible opportunity, given the financing, given the reimbursements, giving just the whole mix.
The reimbursement is, is key. We couldn't do any of this, we couldn't have rebuilt Winters, or at least if we did Winters, we couldn't have done anything else. If it weren't for the, the school aid, the school construction.
Mm-hmm.
And as Councilor Rubio said, ninety-one percent of three hundred and, let's just call it ninety-one percent of, of ninety percent of three hundred million is two hundred and seventy million, you know? It's, it would not be possible, we would not be kicking the tires on it.
Right.
So, uh, and as disappointed as I am about what may or may not come with the McCoy Stadium proper, party, uh, I'm very, very excited. My daughter teaches high school at Petucket, my wife teaches elementary school at Petucket. I've seen all of those kids come up and they deserve, they deserve better than what we've been offered.
Well, it looks like there's a great team effort in place, so congratulations, had a great day for the city.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Folks, we're going to sign off right now. It's been a quality evening here in the, the parish, if you will, of Northern Rhode Island, Petucket, Rhode Island, uh, who took a monumental step today in giving psych control over to, if you will, the Petucket school system.
Yeah, that's true.
We are the coalition loud and proud, outrage porn-free, civil disobedience media broadcasting live, all here on the shores of something. We're here in Petucket, the city we love. Have a great night and, boy, a lot of stuff's going to go on this week, so stay tuned. Thank you.